Call this organizational meeting to order. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante, here. Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker, here.
Court has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is our organizational meeting that we have at the beginning of each year to elect the officers for our calendar year 2018. We will be electing officers for Board President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary of the Mount Clemens Community School Board. The Chair will open nominations for Board President. Yes, Mr. Brewley?
I'll nominate Jason Monk.
Jason Monk has been nominated for Board President.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Voorhees. Any other nominations for Board President?
I nominate Mr. Earl Rickman.
Mr. McFadden nominates Earl Rickman for Board President.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rickman himself. Third call for any other Board nomination for Board President. Hearing or seeing none, the two nominations are Mr. Monk and Mr. Rickman. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Brew-
I'm sorry. Call a roll for Mr. Monk.
Mr. Brewley?
I'm Mr. Monk.
You said for Monk, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
No.
Uh, Voorhees?
Just wait a little bit later. Somebody in some name right here.
Wouldn't the two names go into nomination and then when we cast our vote, we just vote for the person? It isn't for a person or against a person, but you have the two names and then you vote for it. So it wouldn't be a motion to?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just procedurally.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Brewley, and I have no problem with it. But what Mr. Monk was doing was just going by individually names, but I have no problem with doing it the right way.
Yeah, I just don't think otherwise. When there's two people in contention in a race like that, you do it that way. You would vote and then you'd cast the vote for whoever and then that'd be that.
Either way, I have no problem either way.
All right, we'll start over. So the two nominees are Mr. Monk and Mr. Rickman. Call a roll, please, for choices.
Okay, for...
No, just call a roll.
Just call a roll.
And they will indicate who their vote is.
Okay, gotcha. Mr. Brewley?
I'm Mr. Monk.
Dr. McFadden?
Mr. Rickman.
Uh, Voorhees?
Mr. Monk.
Mrs. Escalante?
Mr. Rickman.
Mrs. Walker?
Mr. Rickman.
Mr. Monk?
Myself.
And Mr. Rickman.
Myself.
Motion approved. Mr. Rickman has been nominated for Board President. You have the chair. Congratulations, sir.
I can run it from here.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Uh, thank you to my colleagues on the board and whomever sits in the chair. We are still in the best interest of the citizens and the students that we serve in the Mount Clemens Community School District. It's not a vote against or a vote against for because we're all here to better the school district. Next on the agenda will be the election of the Vice President of the Board. The Chair would take nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board.
Mr. President, I'll nominate Dr. David McFadden.
Dr. David McFadden has been nominated. I'll support that. Are there additional nominations for the position of Vice President? Second call for nominations for the position of Vice President. Final call for a position of Vice President. Hearing or seeing none, nominations are closed. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Dr. McFadden.
Mr. Rickman?
Dr. McFadden.
Mr. Brewley?
I'm McFadden.
Mrs. Escalante?
Dr. McFadden.
Mrs. Walker?
Dr. McFadden.
Mr. Monk?
Dr. McFadden.
And Mr. McFadden.
Myself.
Motion carries on said name for Dr. McFadden for Vice President. Next on the agenda, the Chair would take nominations for the position of Treasurer on the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Janine Walker for Treasurer of the Board.
Janine Walker has been nominated for Treasurer of the Board.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Are there additional nominations for the position of Treasurer?
Mr. Rickman, I nominate Mr. Voorhees as Treasurer.
Nominated by name, Mr. Voorhees has been put in the nominations for the position of Treasurer. Are there additional nominations for the position of Treasurer?
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully decline the nomination for Treasurer.
Mr. Voorhees has declined the nomination for the position of Treasurer. Are there additional nominations for the position of Treasurer? Any additional nominations for the position of Treasurer? Seeing or hearing none, call a roll on said name for Janine Walker for Treasurer.
Mr. Voorhees?
Ms. Walker.
Mrs. Escalante?
Ms. Walker.
Uh, Mr. Monk?
No.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Walker.
Mr. Mc- Dr. McFadden, sorry.
Walker.
I should say Walker, is that yes or no?
And Mrs. Walker?
The eyes carried for the position of Treasurer, Ms. Walker is now the Treasurer of the Board. Next on the agenda is Chair would accept nominations for the position of Secretary of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Christina Escalante as Secretary for the Mount Clemens Community School District.
It's been moved to have Christine Escalante, Christina Escalante, for the Secretary of the Board.
I second.
Any additional nominations for the position of Secretary of the Board? Any additional nominations for the position of Secretary of the Board? Final call for nominations for the position of Treasurer, Secretary of the Board. Hearing or seeing none, said name of Christine Estalante has been nominated for the position of Secretary. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Ms. Escalante.
Mrs. Walker?
Ms. Escalante.
Dr. McFadden?
Mrs. Escalante.
Mr. Brewley?
Escalante.
Mr. Rickman?
Escalante.
Mr. Monk?
Escalante.
Mrs. Escalante?
Myself.
Motion carries for the position of Secretary for Ms. Christina Escalante. Next item on the Board, Item 5, Items that allow the Board to conduct business. Item 8, Designate Depository for School Funds, MCL 380.1221. Chair would entertain a motion. There are recommendations for the proceedings for Item 5 in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we designate for the depository for school funds, a Fifth Third Bank and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund.
It's moved by Mr. Voorhees to designate Fifth Third and Michigan Liquidated Funds as our-
Liquid asset.
Michigan Liquid Asset.
As our depository for school funds.
Support.
Support by Dr. McFadden. Are there questions on the motion on the floor?
I have a question. I see it's also staff recommended. Is there some research done on this or just following up on what we already have?
Yeah, this is just what we do every year. These are- we haven't added any banks, so these are the same ones that we've been using. So we tell you what it is and we recommend we stay the same. Thank you.
Any additional questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, Designate Those Persons Authorized to Sign Checks, Contracts, Agreements, and Purchase Orders. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk to designate those persons authorized to sign checks, contracts, agreements, and purchase orders as presented.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Voorhees.
Are these contract agreement signatures, these are within the policy guidelines, correct?
Yes, these are the ones that we currently have and the ones that, well, we don't have any new ones right now. So, yes.
Any additional questions on the motion on the floor?
Just so you know, we usually also have an assistant suit since both of them, didn't seem to need to put both of them on here. So that's why I said designate.
Got it.
Any additional questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Do- Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, designated day, place, and time for regular meetings which shall be held at least once every month for the Board of Meetings of the Board of Education. Chair would entertain suggestions or a motion, however.
I'll move that the Board meet on the third Wednesday of the month.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees to designate the third Wednesday every month for the date of the regular Board meetings.
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the date of the regular Board meeting? Seeing or hearing none, call a roll, please, on the date of the regular Board meeting.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the date has been established. Chair would now entertain suggestions, idea, or motion for place and time of the regular
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we meet here in the-
Administrative work-
Administrative work area. However, I would like for us to consider perhaps meeting at the Seminole King on a rotating basis. Is that all right?
I wish you'd have said you wanted to have the meetings in the Bahamas.
Whatever it's warm, but the administrative workstation happens. And then we can make a judgment after that.
It's been moved by Mr. Voorhees to establish the administrative work area as the place for our regular meetings and allow the administration to set up a time where we meet at the other buildings that we operate, if I understood your motion correctly.
Absolutely.
Is there support?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Questions, comments on the motion on the floor to establish the administrative work area as the place and allow the administration to set up other meetings at the other building? Mr. Monk?
Yes, I would recommend that we do it more than just once. Last year, we did it one time at Seminole, one time at King, so we need to do a rotating basis. Patrick, I mean, is that fine for you guys, if we can do it more than once at each building? That won't create no logistics for you or anything like that?
I agree.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
So I would say at least rotate at least two, maybe three times, just rotating between both buildings.
I get it.
Yep, yeah, that's good.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the meeting place for the regular meeting of the Board of Education to be established for rotational basis by the administration? Seeing or hearing none, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Lastly, time for our regular meetings. Chair would entertain suggestions, idea, or a motion.
Well, I kept my mouth going all the time, so I'm- I was 6:30. I'll move that's-
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. It's been moved by Mr. Voorhees to establish 6:30 as the time for the regular meeting.
I support.
Support.
Good job.
Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Voorhees, for those motions.
Thank God, I got somebody who's supporting me. You got my back.
Designate those persons authorized to use the safe deposit box. There is an administrative recommendation in the packet, but the Chair would entertain a motion regarding designate those persons authorized to use the safe deposit box.
So moved. There you go, Glenn.
Yeah, thank God.
Moved by Mr. Monk to designate those persons authorized to use the safe deposit box as presented.
Support.
Second, Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Seeing or hearing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, designate the Electronic Transfer Officer, ETO, in accordance with Policy 6144.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Dr. McFadden to designate the Electronic Transfer Officer, ETO, in accordance with Policy 6144 as presented. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, appoint or designate, appoint delegate and alternate for the MSBA Delegate Assembly that happens in the fall.
So moved.
Um, who are you moving? It's the appoint, it's the designate someone.
Oh, I'm stating.
And alternate.
All right.
Let's see, I'm trying to remember where the conference will be in the fall this year. Travis?
I want to say-
Lansing? Yeah, that sounds about right. That sounds about right, yeah. I think by our class, our size, we're allowed one voting delegate and one alternate. We can do it tonight, or we can do as Mr.- I think Mr. Monk's motion would just be to author, you know, approve that, and we can appoint those persons later, or we can do it tonight. It's up to the will of the Board.
Do we have a second?
Uh, no, not yet.
All right. I'll second it with the caveat that we don't name someone at this point.
Sure, we don't have to.
That we at least, you know, one delegate and one alternate.
Got it.
And then whoever can go.
Understood. It's been moved by Mr. Monk to authorize one delegate and one alternate for the MSB Delegate Assembly, seconded by Mr. Voorhees. Any ques- Mr. Monk, Mr. Brewley, excuse me, sir.
Just a suggestion, we probably should approve being a member before we approve the opposite.
You're right.
Sort of.
You're right. You're right. The Chair would entertain a motion to move Item F to Item G and move Item G to Item F.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk to rearrange the agenda.
Support.
Seconded by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item F, Approve MSB Membership for the Mount Clemens Community School District. Chair would entertain a motion. I'll move it to get it out there. Seeking a second.
Second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to approve membership with the MSB on behalf of the Mount Clemens Board of Education? Seeing or hearing none, call a roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item G, Appoint Approved Delegates and Alternates for the MSBA, M.A.S., MSB Delegate Assembly. Chair would entertain a motion.
Again, I'll move that we have one delegate and one alternate to go to the MSB Delegate Assembly for the- and have those delegates and alternates named at a later date.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve a delegate and alternate for the MSBA, MSB Delegate Assembly, and those persons will be named at a later date. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Dr. McFadden. Any questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of legal retainer contract. Mr. Brewley?
Yeah, I would move to approve what's recommended tonight, but that in future years, this proposal be bid out so that we can have approval in December for the next calendar year. And then if a second, I'll speak to it.
It's moved by Mr. Brewley to approve legal retainer contract as presented.
The discussion came up in our committee meeting and we've moved to bring it to the full Board, but I don't like no-bid contracts, and this is basically a no-bid contract. I understand that with what is quote-unquote professional services, you know, you legally don't have to, but I think people run into trouble in a foul, and I think we've seen that in a lot of our communities in the county, when we do no-bid contracts. So I am not unhappy with this law firm. I think they have presented us with quality work. I also know that they cost more than most. We may judge that to be the proper way, but I think we deserve to gather the information and open it up and then consider all the factors and then vote on it. So that's why I would have my motion to bid it out in the future so that this December meeting, we make a decision, and then we would have it in force in January.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Seeing or hearing none, call a roll, please.
Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yep. I'm sorry, yes. Mrs. Walker? Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Chair, whatever.
Just-
Yes.
I just would like to say, this evening, this month is national-
That should carry over to the next meeting, to the regular meeting.
It's just one thing I just want to say. Thank you. But it's national recognition for Board members, and right now, I just want to say thank you to all of you for your service, and in between the meetings, we have a few refreshments that we'd like for you to enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Support by Mrs. Escalante to adjourn the organizational meeting. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
Yes, I have one question. On the mo- on the Item 5-
5.
-7B purchase orders. Did we approve that? I don't even remember approving that.
We did. I was wanting to skip.
I'm trying to see what you're talking about. I'm looking at Item 5.
There's a couple of them that's Mark 7B. There's checks, there's contracts and agreements, purchase orders, and then immediately after that is date, place, and time of regular meetings. I don't believe we did approve purchase orders.
You're talking about Item B?
Yeah.
Seven, there's three 7Bs, so.
Yeah, that's a-
That's all up on the list.
That's all up under B. You had the authorized, a person authorized to sign checks, contracts, agreements, and purchase orders.
Okay.
It was all taken care of under Item B.
It was all, it was broken down individually, though.
No, it wasn't?
Wasn't?
No.
Okay.
What was broken down individually was the next one, Item C. That was broken down individually.
Okay. Well, just for record, we have approved purchases and orders, then, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Any additional questions on the motion to adjourn? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The organizational meeting is adjourned at 6:59. Call a regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Here.
Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Court has been established. Next item on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say welcome to our first Board meeting 2018, and we're to the portion of the agenda, Citizens' Comments. This is the portion of the agenda where the citizens can address the Board with any of your comments, concerns, questions, and inquiries. Be mindful that you may not receive a response from your inquiries tonight. Be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your comments, and last, I request that you make your, address your comments to the Chair. The floor is now open for Citizens' Comments. The floor is now open for citizens' comments.
Delicious, and thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the first meeting. My name is Bob Labney, and basically I am one of several people who live behind you on Miller Street. Back in November, we were upgrading our security system on the school. We were also adding the new high-intensity LED lighting. At that particular time, you were taking the existing lighting, upgrading it with new bulbs, and allowing us to see things a little bit better. Unfortunately, it was a little bit too bright, so we had to make some adjustments. And your main man here, Larry, came by to get up on the ladder and diffuse some of the lighting, which worked out fine. Unfortunately, within a matter of a few weeks after that, we've now installed some very bright, high-intensity LED spot and floodlights. There are only two or three back there. But the concern comes, and this is what we're asking for, and this is simply a formal request, that like the other lights, they be adjusted so they're not coming in the little girl's window next door who has cardboard on it in her bedroom, or the lady next door who sees it directly over her kitchen sink. There are only three lights back there. The one is not really a problem on the adjacent security of the, uh, maintenance building, but the other two are directly in our face. So all we're asking at this time, if there was any way you could diffuse, defer, or somehow or other, just keep them away from us a little bit, because as summer comes, whether it's the patio, the pool, the patio or deck or whatever we're going to be doing, this is going to be right in our face. So that's all we're asking at this time. See if we can get these toned down so that we don't have them, okay? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good first meeting, and thank you for the munchies.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Floor is still open for citizens' comments. Floor is still open for citizens' comments.
Hi, my name is Ryan Rublin. I'm with CARE Southeastern Michigan, but more importantly, I work with the Community Coalition Group for, um, Mount Clemens. And so it's more just an introduction than anything. It's not a comment or anything like that. Just want to say hi, and I look forward to working with all you guys in the near future on Career Day, Real Talk, a couple of events that we got coming up with the students. So more or less just, hi.
Can you repeat your name again, sir?
Yep, my name is Ryan Rublin.
Ryan Rublin.
Yep.
You'd be working with the various programs as you, as you talked about, with, with CARE or you said somebody else.
So, uh, the department that I, the company that I work for, or organization that I work for is CARE Southeastern Michigan, but we support Mount Clemens Community Coalition.
Gotcha.
So. Insert.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys. Keep up the good work.
You, too. Appreciate it. Last call for citizens' comments. Moving the agenda under our action items, Item Five, approval of the minutes of the December twenty seventeen regular meeting.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Monk to approve the minutes of the December twenty seventeen regular meeting as presented.
Support.
Seconded, Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Seeing or hearing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley? Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, bills for payment.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Monk to approve the bills for payments as presented.
Support.
Seconded, Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brewley?
Uh, we went over all these in the committee and found them all being ordered.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item Seven, Resolution to Support School Finance Research Collaborative.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Monk to approve the resolution to support school finance research collaborative.
Support.
Seconded, Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? I have one correction where it says the, uh, the resolution was revised. It says zero forty-one, twenty eighteen.
Oh, twenty eighteen.
What, what should that be? Zero for January four or January one or?
Four, I'm sorry.
January, okay.
Yeah, the fourth.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Informational items, Item Eight, the December twenty seventeen financial reports. Are any questions on the financial reports from December? Seeing no questions, this is informational item, informational item. Item Nine, policies for first reading. Did we, much Neola, discuss these here?
Uh, yes. Oh, there is in the back.
We have the representative from Neola that will briefly go over, uh, with us what these, uh, policies for the first readings are.
And this is Dr. Peters.
Welcome, Dr. Peters.
Good evening, good evening. Excuse me. Um, it was a much more simpler, uh, set of policies than what you had last spring, which, if you remember, was very thick. You had, uh, new legislation on seclusion and restraint, uh, suspension expulsion, restorative practices, and a number of others. So this one is, uh, much thinner. In a, five policies are related in this way. Um, ever since, uh, Michigan moved to, uh, having fingerprint background checks of all its employees, um, the state police and the FBI audit schools each year to see that they're complying with their rules. And each year, they come up with a number of changes, which forces us to do a revision. And you have to adopt the revision because if you didn't follow their latest rules, they could refuse to process your fingerprint requests, and that means you couldn't hire any employees. So we're kind of, they have us all over a barrel, so to speak. The, the, most of the changes always appear in a big policy in your packet, eighty-three twenty-one. That's kind of become the bible of the, of the fingerprint, uh, regulations. Uh, and that does have changes in it. No new choices that you have to, uh, look out for, but just a question of replacement language, uh, that the, uh, the state police have recommended. The, the other four are involved in this way. They are in the different HR sections, and they make reference to the fingerprint records. And the auditor said, we would like a statement in those four, uh, that the, most of the rules are in the big one, the eighty, eighty-three twenty-one. So in the other four, uh, if I can recall the numbers, fourteen twenty-one, thirty-one twenty-one, forty-one twenty-one, uh, those are your three employee groups. And then eighty-one forty-two covers outside people that you are not strictly your employees, but you've required them to be fingerprinted. Uh, vendors, contractors, construction workers, things like that. So on all those, we placed a statement that, uh, most of the regulations are in that big, uh, eighty-three twenty-one policy. So that's how those five are related. Three other policies are related in this way. There's one in each of the three employee group sections, and it's trying to standardize the due process when you, uh, have to discipline an employee. Uh, just briefly, due process means you, you tell the employee that you're doing an investigation. They have a right to bring a representative to any meetings. You tell, you inform them what kind of discipline can be living, and there's an appeal process. Within that, there is one new, uh, wrinkle. And, uh, in addition to all the traditional forms of discipline, reprimands, and suspension with or without pay and warnings, there is a new one, and it's a financial penalty. And that is tied to a new law in Michigan, also in your packet, uh, under number twenty-four ten. It's a law which has already passed the legislature, even has a number in the school code, but it doesn't take full effect for another eighteen months. And that one says that any school employee, agent, volunteer, anybody connected with the schools, that in any way assists or counsels a student to get an abortion, will have a, in, in addition to any other discipline you might give them, by state law now, they will forfeit three percent of their annual salary, which will be returned to the state. And, uh, so that, you know, you have a sixty thousand dollar teacher, that's, uh, eighteen hundred dollars minimum, so that would hurt. I don't know the backstory to this. I would have to assume that it happened somewhere, and this is a reaction to it. Otherwise, it seems an odd thing for the legislature to, to pass if there wasn't, uh, if this wasn't happening somewhere. Be, this, all this takes full effect in the beginning of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. At that time, besides employees being susceptible to a penalty, every school board needs to adopt a policy, which in this case would be the one we're offering you, or there is a one-hundred-thousand-dollar deduct from your state aid if you don't adopt a policy by the start of the nineteen-twenty school year. So they're very serious about it. Uh, at the same time, they were, and we don't know yet what assisting an abortion would mean. It's, it's new, it's untested. I would think it would mean counseling, giving a student literature, recommending a clinic, taking them to a clinic, something like that. But there has been no, no cases on it yet because it, it isn't even in full effect. But, uh, at the same time, the legislature loosened up, uh, another area, um, uh, and this is, uh, twenty-four fourteen and twenty-four eighteen. Twenty-four fourteen describes your, your current, um, uh... Help me. Family?
Family health and re-.
Yes, thank you. I couldn't think of the title. Yes. This is a program that you have. In fact, some of the things in it, you have to teach by law about drug abuse and, uh, uh, communicable diseases and things like that. But Michigan teachers have always been handcuffed at a certain point. They could not answer some of the kids more, uh, detailed, uh, questions like birth control. Um, and, uh, this is also the curriculum that has a, a citizen advisory committee that periodically makes recommendations to you to change that program. So that will continue, although you'll see, uh, from some of the bold language, there's a much stronger, uh, emphasis on abstinence as the only, uh, thing that's a hundred percent effective against pregnancy and communicable disease. And again, it mentions the coming law on not assisting a kid, uh, to get an abortion, and also, uh, prohibition against handing out any, um, devices at school. I think that has happened in some high schools. Uh, at the same time, the one behind of twenty-four eighteen takes the handcuffs off if you wish to. It's optional. It allows you to have a much more detailed graphic, or I don't know what the correct word is, sex education course, where the teacher would not be restrained from talking about birth control or other things that kids ask about. Uh, so it's, it would be an optional course, or it could be a unit within an existing course. Uh, kids would always have the ability to opt out of this. But, uh, so they've said abortion is off the table, but we will loosen up, optionally, we'll let you discuss a lot more in the area of sex education than the law allowed previously. So you'll figure, there's something going on in the legislature. I wish I knew the story. The only other thing in this first packet was, um, we reprinted the, the, uh, policy on seclusion and restraint, which you and many districts adopted during the summer. And the reason we reprinted it was, we found out this fall that, uh, because it didn't get to you, uh, from the state until about mid-June, it sat in some mailrooms all summer, did not get on a board agenda and get adopted, and that was one of the requirements. And so just to make sure that everybody has it now, if not last summer, we reprinted it. But if you adopted it, you, you're okay. You have nothing else to do. The other little packet in this, uh, update was for sequential, uh, technology policies. And, uh, those are a combination of plugging in new legal requirements, changes in, uh, terms, changes in hardware and software and technology. We're just trying to keep up to date. And so, uh, they are the, uh, the student version of acceptable use and the staff version of acceptable use, uh, which they, people have to agree to abide by those to be allowed to use your network at school. The third existing one is setting up email accounts for staff, and the new one, because a lot of schools are now moving in this direction, is setting up email accounts for students within your network. Um, so... I guess that's enough. I said it's less, it's less than last year, but...
Is it less, Mr. Monk?
It's, uh... Well, when we got to meeting that day, it got a little bit more thicker. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, everything is pretty much to, um, the law, a lot of law changes that we have to adopt, a lot of things that we need to have in place. Uh, we also added a couple of things that I know that Mr. Brewley had, and we had kind of went over those, so yeah, we probably can thank him for a reading we had.
Yeah.
And we thank Mr. Wayne for coming in. I recognize him because he grew a beard, so...
Oh, I knew you were going to say that. It was those two weeks when it was so cold, and I didn't have any appointments, so I just let it grow. I...
Yeah, let it grow.
I wanted to see if it was going to come in what color, or whether it was going to be even or splotchy or whatever, so...
See, now you can look ahead and see what you got.
Okay, okay, very handsome guy.
He's got a fan, man.
I'm going to, let's keep it through the cold weather.
Right.
I don't know. When it gets hot, I'll have to make another decision.
Uh, just one question.
Yes.
Of all these policies, first readings I'm looking at, these all appear to be state-mandated?
Yes, unfortunately, that's a trend.
State or federal?
More and more, yeah.
And there's no wiggle room for any...
Not in these particular ones.
Okay.
There are, well, the one option one would be whether you want to offer the more detailed sex education.
Are you talking about policy twenty-four fourteen and twenty-four eighteen?
Yeah, twenty-four fourteen, you should accept the changes.
And that one, we said we're going to, we're going to bring the first reading and have the second so we can adopt it. So in the future, if we do want to, then we also, we have that policy on the books already.
Yeah, there's no time limit to that, and, uh, that's something probably that you want to discuss with some stakeholders before you adopt.
Teachers.
Like parents. I'm thinking. Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions from Dr. Peters regarding the first reading? These are first readings, and they will go back to the, uh, policy committee, but appears these are state and
federal mandates, and out of all that, that he just, that we talked about this today, that there's only one that's optional. All the rest of them are mandated. So any additional questions? Mr. Brewley?
I, I'm sort of still waiting on mine.
What's in there?
Is it in here?
Yeah.
Number K.
It's, uh...
K.
K, yeah. Go down, Mr. Brewley.
K.
Eighty-three forty.
Policy eighty-three forty, letter of reference.
This one here, page one thirty-nine?
Yes.
That's what it says.
Okay, I'm on, I'm on a...
Yeah, you're on the, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so we bring that to first reading, and then at the second, you know, we're going to bring it back to the committee, and then we're going to, uh, contell it to our, what we want as a board.
NOLA, and I'm not sure it's written. I'll read it again tonight, but, uh, because I thought these were NOLA policies.
Well, what we did is that we asked Mr. Wayne, did he have some type of, uh...
Well, what we did is that we asked Mr. Wayne, did he have some type of, what's the word I'm looking for, some type of format that we can kind of start from? So he gave us a format. He printed us off a format. So then we need, we just need to kind of gear it and critique it to what we want.
Well, let me then, I'll direct the question to you. My, my problem was, I didn't want board members to be giving letters out on station air.
Sure.
Does that solve that problem? I don't know.
No, we don't. We're gonna have to add some.
No, see, I don't think the language is, this language doesn't solve the problem that.
When we bring it back to the policy committee, we'll put that language in there.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Peters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
That was item nine. Next informational item is item 10, Board Superintendent Evaluation Training. It's now required that the board has to be trained in certain aspects of what you do in terms of evaluating of the superintendent. And it's the whole board, or the majority of the board, has to be trained in that modality. And we would seek, or we could send out a, an email, trying to find out if there are dates available for the board. First, we'd have to check with MASV, MASV or MASA, see if they have a trainer.
I found a trainer and they said that they just need dates now. You give us, give them some dates. They could either come here, or you could go there. They said they'll meet wherever you want to, but everyone has to be trained.
So we'll send out, oh, Mr. Brewley, I'm sorry.
How long does it take?
Is that a couple hours?
Two hours, I think, two, three hours, two and a half hours.
I would move that we do it at our next board meeting. We're all here. Board meeting is not lasting longer. We can adjust the time.
So you want to hold it after the board meeting?
Before or after? I'll say after.
I'm okay with that, girl.
Okay. I will check with them to make sure that they're available at that time. So you say, what, about 7:30?
About 7:30.
Eight o'clock? Okay. 7:30, okay.
So that will be the third Wednesday of February. After the regular board meeting, we will hold the Board Superintendent Evaluation Training Component. Mr. Monk?
Mr. Rickman, I think we need to, I will move to support the cost of this. There's a cost involved with this, and it's been giving more information, but with the training, there's a cost involved with that. So I guess we need to prove the finance, our financial obligation for that.
Right. They can't give me a specific amount until they know who's available for the date that we want. They said minimally 500, maximum of 2,000. So.
Wow.
Does that depend on who the trainer is?
Yes. And so they have to look and see who's available to do it.
Okay. So how do you want to word your motion, Mr. Monk, to authorize the expenditure?
I will, I will move to authorize the expenditure for the superintendent training pending the date and also firm providing for our training.
Moved by Mr. Monk to authorize the expenditure of the trainer for the Board Superintendent Evaluation Training Component. What was the rest of it?
Pending, pending the date and firm, who's gonna do the training?
Pending the date and firm, meaning that if somebody can be here for the next board meeting.
Can we cap the cost? Can we say not to exceed? Or do we limit ourselves with that?
Quite a bit ended up time, because I was trying to, you know, make them commit, and they said there's no way until they know when and where.
Okay.
Then they contact the trainers and see who's available.
Okay, so.
And then depending on who's available, then he can give me a price. But he did say minimum 500, maximum 2,000.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll add to my motion to pending the, pending the date and time of the firm and the company to set our limit at a minimum of 500, maximum of 2,000.
So Mr. Monk has amended his motion to pending on the date and availability of the trainer and a minimum of $500 and not to exceed $2,000 in expenditures for that training.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Voorhees. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? I'll make a call to MASV tomorrow. There are a couple of individuals that do that training that live, one lives in Macomb County, one lives in Oakland County. I can try to make outreach tomorrow and see, start the ball rolling, see who may be available, and hopefully we can get one of those persons, and it will be on the lower, I would believe it will be on the lower end of the pay scale as opposed to the higher end. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none. Call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFattan?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item 11, informational item, open purchase order listings. Any questions, comments on the open purchase orders listings? That's presented in the packet. Seeing none. Item 12, any questions on the contract listings? Seeing none. Next, superintendent's comments.
Well, thank you. First of all, I have to say congratulations to the new officers for the coming year, and especially to all of the board members who are serving our district. People don't realize that it is a lot of work that goes behind the scenes for you to make sure that we are doing what is right for our students in the community. So thank you to all of you. There are placemats at your seats. These were made by Seminole students, and they just wanted to let you know how much they appreciate the hard work that you do and knowing that you're not always thanked for that. The other thing, we have given you guys gift boxes, and hopefully it does not come close to even giving you a token of what you deserve to serve on this board, but we wanted you to know that we didn't forget about you, and we really do appreciate what you guys do for our students. So thank you.
She may want to open it up.
Oh, yes, she can open them. Yeah.
That's what I think it is.
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Nice, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
So they are stickers, note cards, and pens for you, for your writing. And then, of course, the refreshments that we have for you. Hopefully you will enjoy them and take some of them home.
Ms. Davis, I would like to just make a comment. I don't want you to finish. But I love this, and I'd rather have this instead of this for me. Laminate this, put this right off front. It's different, but it promotes our kids, and I love it. So for me personally, you can laminate mines, and I want mines right here. That book will look real good. And colorful. Thank you, kids. We appreciate you. Great job.
Well, leave that with us, and we will definitely laminate that and have that for your, for yours that want that, we'll have that for your place next time. Great, okay. And I do have a shout out for a couple of our students. Last month, we recognized two of our, the teacher and a parent for coming to the rescue of one of our students. They were having a medical situation, and the teacher and the parent recognized that and called mom, and the doctors did say that, you know, they saved her life. Well, this month, we have two students that we want to say congratulations to and thank you so much for being our heroes. And the two students are Simone Roberts from Mrs. Bolt's class, she's a first grader, and Sanaya Roberts from Mrs. Hill's class. I believe she's a third grader. But they were with their grandmom, and Simone, the first grader, noticed that she wasn't, she was acting differently, and she alerted her sister, Sanaya, Sanaya called 911. The ambulance, and in the meantime, the first grader did give her grandma a piece of candy and realized she was having a diabetic attack. And so the paramedics came and said that she did save her grandmother's life. So we want to say congratulations to Simone and Sanaya for being our new heroes in Mount Clemens. Thank you so much. And, and with that, those are my comments.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next, committee reports. Business Committee. Mr. Voorhees?
Mr. Chairman, the Business Committee was held on Tuesday, January 9th, at 9:30 in the morning here in the Administrative Works Center. Those present were myself, trustees Brewley, Jeanne, you were there, I'll have to put that in there, Jeanne Walker, and the superintendent. Those items covered are the items that we covered tonight, the financial reports for December, payment of bills, purchase order listing, the resolution to support the school finance research collaborative, contract listings, and then the facilities update. After the meeting, it was brought to our attention that there was a leak in a restroom in the, what I call the old building. And two of my colleagues took a tour and took a look at that. Ed, you can, Ed or Jeanne, you can give us a report?
You mean, other than the fact that Mr. Brewley threw me under the folding tiles? Please, step here.
So I needed to inspect it more closely.
Jeanne, please.
Yeah, I was at it.
They continued to fall.
But not on me. They did not, no, they didn't.
So we confirm we got a leak.
Well, it was, it was a big leak. It's gonna cause some real damage, and it's a problem. People were working very hard to fix it and control it.
Yes.
But it's, it's one of the issues in an older building.
Got a flat roof also in Michigan?
Well, this was a pipe that burst by caulking.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Caulking burst.
Ah, so we had a pipe leak, not a roof leaking.
So this was not, this is not a roof leak or anything like that, but it was saving money, the heat is lower, the pipe didn't burst per se, but the caulking.
Caulking gave us.
So it was in a restroom that got kind of cold. And then no one saw it, and it went down a couple floors.
Right. So unfortunately, you know, another added expense.
One of those things.
But, and then the meeting adjourned at 11:55, and the next meeting will come under Ms. Walker's regime, and that'll be on Tuesday, February 13th, at 9:30.
Any questions of the chair or the committee? Mr. Brewley?
We're gonna maybe move the date, I just wanted to talk after the meeting.
All right, thank you. Policy, Mr. Monk?
Yes, sir. We met on Wednesday, the 10th, at 9, 9 o'clock. Actually, we started meeting at 19, I was a little late. We finished at 10:35. We pretty much went through our stack of policies with Mr. Wayne, which really gave us a real update on, you know, he gives us that quick snapshot view of what we're looking at, instead of having to read through the stack of policies that we had. It was myself, Mr. Voorhees, and Mrs. Escalante, and Mrs. Davis, our new secretary, welcome, broker in a little bit, so, and Mr. Wayne. We discussed a series of policies. We also dug into the reference letter policy, and we also dug into some of the administrative guidelines that Ms. Davis is going to be looking at, one of which is there's a form that's in one of the policies that for the committee, we recommended that it be used district-wide for disciplines, so all i's are dotted and all t's are crossed. So when there is an issue with a student for, for any type of reason, there's a paper trail. Now, I believe in documentation, you know, my, my belief is if it's writ, if it's not written down, it didn't happen. So that's something we need to really get to as far as in all of our buildings, just district-wide, just to cover ourself from a legal standpoint and also to cover the kids, just so we can have documentation. So, you know, if it comes to the point where it's that we need to provide something to a professional, we have that documentation to give to that professional that will help that kid out. So it's a win-win for both, both parties. We looked at the, the new, that Mr. Wayne had alluded to. We brought that for first reading, but I know Ms. Davis is going to get with the union and just make sure that the union is, the union knows about it across the board, so, you know, we're not in any type of legal ramifications behind that particular policy. Like I said, we adjourned at 10:35, and we, I will set the next meeting, I go with Ms. Davis, and set the next meeting. That's if I am on the policy committee as chair. We'll set the next one for next month, and we'll hopefully bring everything to second reading by next board meeting. That is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Any questions of the chair? If you have any, there are a couple that you're working on language. If you have any suggestions for, for the language provided to the superintendent or Mr. Monk. Community Coalition. Mr. Lennanberry?
Good evening, Board. The Community Coalition is currently teamed up with T3, Teens Talking Truth, and they're holding a Jeans for Teens Drive. So if you have any gently-used blue jeans that you are no longer able to fit into, or if you get loose like me, you may donate them to the main office. They will then be, from now until, I believe, February 2nd, the first week, the Friday of the first week of February, they will then be turned over to Family Youth Interventions, and they will then be distributed to some young people who could use, certainly use another pair of blue jeans or two. So that, that's going on. We'll be meeting again here, a week from today, at 3 o'clock, and you are always welcome to join us. I will be more active now that things are improving for me, so you will see me more often here and at Community Coalition. I'll field any questions if I'm able to answer them.
Yes, sir. What do you mean by slightly-used?
However you wish. Ones you no longer.
Because now they're tied with holes in them.
If you no longer wish to own them, I'm sure somebody else might wish to own them. They prefer the term gently-used, so I'm simply reading off of the flyer, sir. Now, if you abuse them, I don't know.
That's why I had to ask. What do you mean gently-used?
Simply reciting what I was told, sir.
I understand, sir.
I was not prepared to field that particular question, but thank you very much.
You need to stop this.
Yeah.
And that's my fault, thank you.
Any question, Mr. Lennanberry?
No.
Thank you, sir. Legislature, there was no committee meeting. Curriculum personnel?
We met on Tuesday, January 9th, at 1 o'clock. Mr. Brewley, Ms. Davis, and myself were there, as well as Elizabeth Jensen, who filled us in on lots of things, as you can see. Student counts, assessment calendar, the I-Rip, course offerings, club offerings, field trips. trips. She had a lot to...
David was there too.
Yeah. Well, you got on here. I'm like, and Dr. McFadden was there as well.
Military training, over operations.
Well, you're good.
It was just under the radar.
There you go. And anything that you two have to, I mean, it was, it was very...
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was a very good meeting.
Yes.
It was a good beginning and I think that we should include some of the things, as we do with the finance meeting, in the board packet just for informational purposes. And we're sort of developing what standard kinds of things should there be every meeting so we have the agenda, not attendance, but enrollment, things like that, so that everybody can see.
Can we arrange for her to report out at a board meeting about the changes in the curriculum and so everybody can hear it?
Yes, and we do have to schedule a workshop, so...
I don't think we need to do that every board meeting, what, once a quarter?
Yeah, no, I'm not saying every board meeting to give a report out, but when there's some updates, you know, come forward.
And the next meeting will be, to be determined, I guess. By, we had discussed the thirteenth, but now we, the twelfth was better.
So that was the issue, could we do it on the twelfth?
Okay.
Because...
Well, that'll be up to...
We can do it on curriculum on the twelfth. Could we do finance on the twelfth?
Yeah, she's still, she's no finance.
I mean, it's perfect if you're still the...
Right.
Any additional questions for the chair? Thank you. Athletics?
We had no meeting, but we will be having some future ones. I have some community interest inside the committee itself. But to report, no meeting.
Thank you, sir. Educational Foundation Commitment, there was no meeting. Board comments? Start with my far right this evening, Mr. Brewley.
Well, we began the year with a good curriculum meeting and I think that was the most important thing. Our finances, the superintendent continues to keep them well-managed and what needs to happen, in my opinion now, is a bigger dive on curriculum, which our, our first time when we had our curriculum director halftime, but there and present, we got a very good understanding of the testing regimen. We're going to be able to see the tests as they come in periodically and I think improving the curriculum is the biggest thing that we need to concentrate on and try and make that happen. Now, we are stymied by a lack of money. The budget clearly is only within two or three thousand dollars of going over the edge. If we lose any more students, we have no more, as we did this year, ability to find places for money. So we're in a very difficult situation, but I think we should still push on and try to improve our curriculum as much as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Ms. Walker?
Well, I'm excited for another new year. This is, we did have a great meeting. The Roberts girls are amazing.
Yes.
That's amazing to see youth do those sorts of things. That always amazes me and I'm awestruck and inspired by that sort of thing. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Monk?
No comment.
No comment?
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mr. Voorhees?
Mr. Chairman, I come with, this is difficult for me, but I, after a lot of thought, I am not going to seek reelection come November. So I'm hoping that someone comes forward or many people come forward to run for the school board. It has been my pleasure to serve on this board.
Wait a minute, you're not going nowhere.
Well, yeah. I still have one more year to serve. I still have one more year to serve. But in that anticipation of, and to make sure that there is a seamless transition in the office of treasurer and on the finance committee, I chose not to run for reelection for the treasurership. Ms. Walker will, who, whose term runs through for another three years, has graciously accepted that position and we elected her tonight and she has a finance background and she will do a great job here. We are very fortunate to have a superintendent with a strong business background and, and she keeps us on the straight and narrow, believe me. And so I, I look forward to my last year here on the board. I do encourage anyone who, who has a strong feeling for the Mount Clemens Community School District to, to run for this board and to serve on it. The rewards are not financial, obviously, because we don't pay anything, but it's, it's things like this, this, I look forward to this each year. This is, this is payment in full for my service on this board. With that, before I get too, too deep, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Ms. Escalante?
Well, Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to working with all of you again. This is my first official year mark as serving on this board with all of you and I'm honored to continue to serve with all of you. I think that we all have the interest of the children and the district at heart and that's, at the end of the day, that, that's what unifies all of us and I know that the district is headed in the right direction because of this team right here as well that continues out beyond us and that continues in with our staff, all of our staff. So I'm looking forward to 2018 to see what it brings and thank you, Seminole, for that. I love it and I love Mr. Monk's idea of laminating them and putting them on the front. It's much, much more motivating to see this when you walk in.
Exactly.
So definitely. And that, that's it. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Thank you, Teresa, for, of course, once again, your beautiful details, paying attention to details and making us feel appreciated and special. Thank you.
Because you are special. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Dr. McFadden?
Well, you know, I'm a person of short words, not many, but I want to say thank you to everybody and also for this, mine is better than everybody else's.
Look at you.
I don't think so. I like mine. Did you?
They did a good job.
Let's see whose name is on there.
So shout out to them for doing that. Also want to give a shout out to our camera crew from the left to right. We have Angel, Saleh, Darren, and Casey. I want to say, hey, I'm proud of you guys back there doing some work. I always got to give our camera crew some recognition.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Patrick Lennanberry too, he got to give you some recognition too. But nonetheless, I have no other comments, but say thank you and that's about it.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden.
Halftime was over with. We had to break and that was, you know, I marked that as halftime through the year and we're well into the second half of the semester. And for those students that are, that took the first half off or took the first quarter off, you still got time to pull it together because you don't want to foul out in the second half. So I would encourage students to stick, stick to the grindstone, continue to be attentive and attendance in your classes because if you don't go to class, you can't learn anything from the class. So that's important, you, you show up and then be an active participant in the classroom itself. We are here to educate students and that's part of your responsibility is to take advantage of the opportunities that are presented to you as students in the school system. To our athletic team, both our boys and girls, high school and middle schools, they're all competing. We say good luck to you in the rest, in the rest of the season. To our staff and our support staff, welcome back for 2018. As my colleague, Mr. Brewley alluded, we're, we still have some financial challenges. We do the best we can with the resources that we have and we are on a narrow, a narrow edge when we have expenditures that were not projected or they're much more than we projected. We have to come up with the money, with the same amount of money, not predicting or envisioning the additional spend, expenditures that we have for things that come that were not built, built into the budget. I know last year, we were able to save some money because of the mild winter. I don't believe we're going to be able to have the benefits of the largest savings that we did last year because of the kind of winter that we've had thus far. It's been brutal. The cold weather came much sooner than traditionally we have. It's not, it hasn't been the snow that's really been putting us behind, it's just the cold weather. I think we've had, we've already had three days of classroom time missed because of extremely cold weather because we didn't believe it to be prudent nor the right call to anticipate and expect students to be standing, waiting on a bus or walking to school when it's a minus twenty-seven degrees outside. So we, we missed a couple of days of school that we didn't miss last year due to the cold and now we're just really getting to the time of the year when we really go into the deep freezer, but we've already been in the deep freezer. So hopefully, we don't experience any other kind of disruptions in the building like busted pipes. That's what happens when you have extreme cold weather and then things start to unfold. You, you experience a busted pipe. So hopefully, we can do some things to eliminate that and to, you know, to happening, to happening in the future because anytime that happens, those are additional expenses as Mr. Brewley alluded to that we had not planned for. So when we have to take money to do, plant something for A, we got to take that money that we were going to do for B. So it's always a balancing act with our budget, but we, we're working hard, the superintendent is working hard to ensure that we have quality educational programs going on in the buildings. Just say good luck to the students, keep your nose to the grindstone. We want to see you all at the, the honors convocation and ultimately graduation for those that are in the twelfth grade this year.
And news?
Oh, yes, it's been brought to my attention that we have in the center page of the journal advertisements, when you take, when you pull it up in the center page, it falls right to Mount Clemens. So we do have advertisements that are, that are being generated throughout Mount Clemens, Clinton, and Harrison Townships and it says good things about what, what goes on here in the schools and we invite parents, citizens to come in and see what we're doing in our school buildings. Come in, register in the office, speak with the principal or the secretary and then take a tour through our buildings to see what's going on inside of our buildings because what goes on inside of our buildings, you can't see on the outside of the building. We have some tremendous things going on for our students in the Mount Clemens Community School Districts. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walker. Second by Dr. McFadden. Questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor to adjourn. Hearing and seeing none. Call roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at eight oh four P M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for a good meeting.